I'd like to call to order the Spark City Council Meeting of October 26, 2015. To order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty, absent. Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt, absent. City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, if you'd all stand, please, for the invocation. We have Greg Hamilton with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Welcome, sir, to the invocation.
Thank you, sir, it's my honor. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we bow our heads today to give thanks for bestowing upon us a beautiful and graceful community. Father, we ask that you bless those in our community, our first responders, our men and women in the military, those serving both at home and abroad. Bless their lives, the lives of their friends and families. Father, we ask that you bless the city council with the Spirit of the Holy Ghost that it may guide and counsel this body as they make decisions regarding our community. Father, we ask for continued moisture to bless this area with some additional rainfall and a good snowpack so we can continue to grow and prosper as a community. Father, we say these things in the name of your only begotten Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bybee, would you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Please show me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is public comment. Anyone who want to speak under public comment, please fill out one of these cards and we'll give you three minutes. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for motion. Mr. Smith.
Moved to approve.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Please display. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, item number six, consideration and possible approval of minutes of the regular Spark City Council Meeting of October 12, 2015. Any omissions, deletions, corrections? Looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson.
Moved to approve.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee, to approve the minutes of October 12, 2015, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Consent items, anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson.
Moved to approve items 8-1 and 8-2.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve consent items 8-1 and 8-2. Any further discussion? See, nope, seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, okay, moving right along. General business, item 9-1, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of an amended and restated garbage and recycling exclusive franchise agreement between the City of Sparks and Spark Sanitation. Welcome, sir. Mr. Maron.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Dan Maron, your contracts and risk manager, for the record. Your item and consideration today has been a long time coming for many people, but we're pleased to be bringing you the amendment to the city's franchise that will greatly enhance the recycling services for the residents of the City of Sparks. We've taken the existing franchise agreement and made language edits and presented it to you as the amended franchise agreement. As background, the current franchise became effective in July of 2008 and has an initial 10-year term with mutually agreeable options for extension. The reason the government's franchised this line of business is mainly to offer some manner of predictable control over a service that may affect the public health. Additionally, the city collects a franchise fee of 8% of collected gross revenues from the franchisee. The city council requested in past workshops and meetings that we work toward an enhancement to the residential recycling program, similar to what was rolled out in the City of Reno in 2012 and 13. And we've worked with Waste Management to refine the program proposed today, to learn from the experiences gained in Reno, and to design features specific to the City of Sparks. As you may remember, at your meeting on August 10 of this year, you reviewed and discussed a proposal made by Waste Management that outlined the concepts of a new residential recycling program. Since that meeting, your city team has worked with the team from Waste Management to translate the general terms of that proposal and your feedback into the city's existing franchise agreement. There remained a key issue that was left outstanding from the meeting of the 10th and will need to be addressed later today, and that's the length of the term of the amended agreement, and I'll outline those choices shortly. But once again, to be clear on the record, with respect to the scope of the agreement, that is what materials are picked up and hauled by whom, there are no changes to the existing scope. While there are rate adjustments that impact both residential and commercial customers, the changes in operational process affect only the residential customers. Services provided by other haulers in the community would not be affected or altered by what's been proposed, leaving the bulk of these commercial services open to competition for non-garbage items, was a big part of the negotiation we did in 2007 and '08, and that has not changed. So with that made clear, some, again, have asked why the city would choose to not bid franchise services at this time, and again, it's just a matter of contract law. Your existing franchise agreement is a binding agreement for at least three more years. However, with the consent of both parties, that is the city and Waste Management, we can choose to make changes at any time. Your staff report includes multiple attachments that have hopefully provided you information, adequate information, on the current agreement, the proposal that Waste Management, as well as the marked up and amended agreement that affects the changes that we proposed. I'm not going to verbally go through every red line strike in the agreement, but I'd need to quickly run a few, through a few of the more major items. We've beefed up the definition section, adding definitions for curbside recyclable materials and references. We've cleaned up some other definitions, and I'm happy to answer those questions. Within the term section of the agreement, section 2.04, this portion of the agreement has a few lines that will need to be filled in today. If approved by the council today, the commencement date would be today's date. The expiration date is what is still to be determined by this council, and various options are presented and will be discussed at the end of this presentation. A part of the motion will include what that expiration date should be. Once those dates are filled in, that's when Mayor would theoretically sign the agreement, and we pass it along to Waste Management for their signature. Section 3.04 includes language regarding alternative technology, and this has been an issue for various councilmembers throughout this agreement and the previous one. We've heard feedback about concerns regarding advances in disposal technology or waste to energy somehow making this agreement outdated from the start. There is language contained within section 3.04 that allows for operational changes to be made to take advantage of those innovations. So that language remains and is something that we can always use in partnership with the franchisee. Your franchise fee rate in 4.01, while this looks like a new rate, this is just a notation of the rate change that we did before the fiscal, 2015 fiscal year, and that's when we changed the franchise fee rate from 5% to 8%. It's not a new rate, it's just memorializing what we're currently doing. Section 5.03 deals with residential-based services, and this is the section that gets us into the operational changes associated with changing out the existing crate system for recycling into the new rolling carts. This is also the section that regularly refers to Exhibit A, which is the rate sheet, and this is the rate sheet that is the most public information that we have, that we get the calls on the most, and is actually posted on our website, where we list every rate associated with the garbage franchise from commercial through residential. That is what Exhibit A is about, and that's, if you're seeing that, just know that that's the piece. Operationally, the rate to be charged is an all-inclusive rate for all the material services, the services associated with the collection and the disposal of all materials, whether a household chooses to recycle or not. Garbage continues to get collected on a weekly basis under the amendment and recyclable materials every other week. This is also the section that changes the amount of waste that can be placed outside of the rolling cart. As a reminder, under the current agreement, residential customers can place up to six additional bags of materials outside their can each week for pickup under their existing rate. Moving forward under the new program, it's hoped that customers will recycle more of their waste and cut down on the need to put extra bags in the curb, so the proposed amendment removes that allowance for extra materials each week, but with some allowances. Waste Management would provide each residential customer 20 stickers or tags each year, and these will be used in instances where a customer has no choice but to throw extra materials out beside their trash cans. If needed, they can always purchase additional stickers as well, and that rate is covered within the rate sheet. In addition to the tag program, the same section of the contract allows that twice per year, there will be a month-long period where Sparks residents can still put up to six extra bags next to their can each week, and this is an attempt to try to address the fall leaf season and spring cleaning cycle. So for a full month, and it'll be publicized, and we'll use every method we have at our disposal to say, this is the time to do it, we will publicize to the residents that they've got a month here where they can throw out the extra stuff without having to worry about tags. Finally, residents are also going to be allowed up to four free trips per year to the landfill or transfer station to dispose of items, and those trips will be at the discretion of the scheduling of the customer and not limited to the current free dump days that are offered by Waste Management. Finally, the same section dealing with residential rates deals with the establishment of the senior citizen rate and the transition to that rate from the current Senior Citizens' Property Tax Assistance Act, which apparently no longer exists. So we're establishing a senior citizen rate within our agreement. Section 5.10 deals with master-built communities and addresses concerns that Waste Management is seen regionally with respect to communities such as mobile home parks and some condominium complexes where garbage services are individual to the units, but all the units are then billed to the master community. This section establishes a formula for calculating rates based on a percentage of occupancy within the community and has been a process supported by the management of those communities during the Reno transition. Section 6.2 deals with recycling service and details the operational changes specific to the new recycling cart, and they point to Exhibit B, which is the list of items that may be recycled under the new program, and it's a greatly expanded list from where we are right now with the crate system. Language is also included in this section that defines conditions where a load might be found to be, quote, "contaminated" with items that are not recyclable and how a customer might be put on notice if you have repeated issues or regular issues of contamination within the recycling bin. And then the remainder of the agreement, we, it's really hard to minimize the number of edits to the franchise agreement, we tried to focus solely on what came out of your meeting on August 10, and that really is the bulk of it, outside of the term and rate section. And that's what I want to hit on here because that's, that's the fill in the blank section and really what most people will be interested in in terms of what their rates may be. Yes, thank you, Rich. The residential collection proposal discussed by the city council on the 10th included the wish by Waste Management to extend the base term of the existing agreement by an additional 10 years, moving the expiration from June of 2018 to June of 2028. The base term includes mutually agreeable options for extension of two five-year periods. At the meeting on the 10th, the city council expressed concern over a base term with the addition of 10 years and asked for options, and that's what we're presenting to you today. As noted on the 10th, rates for commercial services covered under the franchise agreement would be reduced by 2% as the residential subsidy that has historically been paid by commercial accounts has been removed. So since the primary change in operations under this plan is specific to residential recycling, the length of term adopted by the city council will directly affect those rates. As a baseline, it's simplest to compare the residential collection rate and how it might adjust depending on the term, and the relative differences are summarized in the attachment, the rate comparison of term options, which is what we've just put up on the display. So we've presented three options, and the first is the 10-year extension, which was the original proposal made by Waste Management that you addressed on the 10th. The rate impact to the residential customer would include the cost of the removal of the traditional commercial subsidy to the residential services, as well as the increased costs associated with the installation of the new single-stream recycling program. If we stick with the proposed 10-year extension, the total cost of residential services would increase by 98 cents per month. So that takes your current baseline residential rate with a 96-gallon garbage can and a 96-gallon recycling toter from $19.37 a month to $20.35 a month. The new rates would become effective at the quarterly billing following the immediate delivery and servicing of the new recycling container, and at the moment, we're looking at the February billing of 2016. Option B was a middle ground, seven-year extension, showing an expiration of June 30 of 2025. Operations the same as option A. With respect to rates, the total of residential services go from, would go up by $1.09 per month, taking it from $19.37 a month to $20.46 per month. And then finally is option C, which is just the five-year extension from your current agreement. Operationally, again, it's the same with respect to rates, it's an additional $1.27 a month, taking you from $19.37 to $20.64 per month. And the last issue that we need to at least highlight here with respect to rates is just an unfortunate coincidence of timing. Every year, our franchise agreement has a rate escalator tied to consumer price index that's measured in November and executed in February, so we would see the CPI increase at about the same time that we're seeing whatever increase you choose here. The CPI hasn't been measured, it's measured in November, but trending right now, we're looking at about 1.5% or about another 29 cents on top of what you see here tied to That concludes my outline of what you have in front of you. Obviously, there are representatives from Waste Management in the room that can also assist on more detailed questions if I can't help you with an answer.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Questions? Mr. Smith.
Dan, have we established the months for the extra bags, the six extra bags?
We've been discussing it as late as a half hour ago. Within the agreement, as it's written in front of you, we had identified October and May, presuming a fall leaf season, but as we all know, not all the leaves have fallen yet, and we were presuming that November is going to be a better month going forward. As long as we can declare that early enough to be able to publicize those dates to the citizens through Waste Management channels and City of Sparks channels, we think it can float outside of action of this body, it can be an administrative discussion. But I can tell you that we all looked outside and said, okay, well, we've got three days left in the month, and perhaps November's a better option. May, we think, is still good because it's after, we start seeing warmer weather and people may be doing spring cleanup, yard cleanup in advance of gardening for the summer and that sort of thing.
And I didn't see a price for the extra tickets.
Sorry, I do have them down, however. The extra tickets are, at the moment, $2.63 each, or $40.95 for a book of 20. So they're getting the first 20 as part of their rate, if they want to purchase an additional 20, it's just shorter, $41.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ratty.
So I just want to clarify on those tickets that, it's 20 per year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, it's not just 20 at the beginning. And then, did we come up with the expiration dates for the franchise agreements in Reno and Washoe County?
We did not. The City of Reno just adopted theirs in 2012, 13. I believe their initial term was 10 years, if I recall. The county is actively renegotiating theirs in the same manner we are at the moment, so that's in flux.
So Reno's is 10 years from today, so it's going to be 2025?
From their adoption in 2012, so 2022.
2022.
But they have similar options for extension as we do. No, one more.
Greg Martinelli, on behalf of Waste Management, actually, it's, was 17 years. It was the existing five-year extension plus 10, so it's 2029.
2029.
Right, and Washoe County is 2020.
2020, okay. And then, we had a question from a citizen regarding recycling in apartment complexes, and I know, I got a great answer from Mr. Maron about that apartments are handed on the, handled on the, not corporate, but
Commercial.
Commercial, thank you, on the commercial side. Did you, I know that this was a big issue in Reno as well, did you come to a different resolution in Reno with apartments, or are apartments able to recycle, or can you just talk a little bit about that issue and what some of the challenges are?
There's an option available for them to recycle, yes. Generally, what happens in apartments is the space available for the container. Because of the parking restrictions, generally, they're pretty tight with so many spaces required per unit, and so in order to provide an additional space for a container for recycling, they'd have to give up a parking place, and it's sometimes problematic for the older complexes. The newer complexes are moving forward, and they're actually putting in locations for recycling containers.
So that's what's happening in Reno?
Yes.
So what does our franchise agreement allow in terms of recycling for apartments? Is it the same thing?
Well, it's, it's not regulated in Sparks, so it's just up to, we provide the service, but it's up to the complex. If they want to recycle and they have the space, we'll provide in the containers and the service.
Okay, great. And then my final question was, because we do have some of these wonderful bells and whistles around the extra months and things like that, just looking for a commitment on your part that it's not just going to be our communication channels to advertise those, but that we'll be using your communication channels, just like we advertise free dump days and things like that?
Yes, yes. I mean, we, I just told Dan that, you know, we can't have that floating constantly because of the communications piece, but we're not, we want to, we want to know what month, because it's easier for us to staff it and know when it's coming, but if November is better, November's fine with us.
It's just, you have the direct line to the consumer, so I want to make sure that that's not just our ads in the paper or things like that, it'll be
No, we can do call blasts, we could do inserts, we could do anything to help with that communication.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. On the Exhibit B that talks about the recyclable materials, and it gives the whole list of items that you're able to recycle, on the bottom, it talks about the contamination, and the contractor may impose a fee or charge for placement of contaminated recyclable materials in a recycling container for collection, or may charge for and dispose or refuse to accept that. Is there, is there a scale or a fee schedule on that? I kind of, leaving that, you know, that, how much is a consumer going to be liable if, and I saw the, in our other language, it talked about noticing, like, by the third notice, and if they continue to not comply, we've got that spelled out, but, but I was a little nervous about for people who are putting the wrong things in and trying to learn what, what's right and what's not, what kind of fee and how soon that is imposed that we'd be looking at?
Well, the rates established in the schedule, it's $10.
$10.
But it's, it's after, it's after two, two warnings of you're placing the wrong material in the container. And I'm not talking about, it's not somebody that has put, put a pizza box in there and it actually still had pizza on it, you know? That's not recyclable. I mean, it's, you could compost it if we had a composting program, but it's not recyclable as far as cardboard goes. So these people are trying to do the right thing, it's just a contaminant, so they're, through a warning, they would know they're not going to put pizza boxes in it again. Where we're finding the egregious behavior was when people are just using it as another garbage can. And unfortunately, what ends up happening, that ends up contaminating an entire recycling load, and it causes a problem. So generally, if, if the folks haven't got it by the fifth time and we're going to pull the container, they don't want to recycle, they just want another can. So, so there are going to be, you know, the sticker, the sticker that we're going to place on the container should, should coach the folks into what is the proper material to be recycled, and they should, if they really want to recycle, which we're finding generally, most people do, that, that they will come around through the education process.
Okay, and I guess that was part of it, too, I guess, in conjunction with Councilwoman Ratty's question, part of the education, public awareness of the whole program would include kind of coaching people who don't know. And there are new things that we can recycle that we haven't been able to before, so do we have to wash out every container? Do we have to, you know, make sure there's not things in the bottle of a, you know, bottle that we're putting in? You know, those type of things will be part of your public education piece?
Yes, yeah, Sarah's been working with, with Adam Mayberry on a program of, we've got all sorts of collateral. We were actually going to bring you some, but quite frankly, we didn't want you guys to have editorial authority over any of it, so. We have too many chefs in the kitchen, we didn't know we'd ever get anything developed.
Okay.
So, but once we get the final package put together, and like I said, Sarah's been working with Adam on that, we'll, we'll get that to you, and it'll be, we think it provides adequate information for folks. The top of the container has embossed on the lid, it shows what you can, can recycle, so we think it'll, we think it'll be effective.
Okay, and I, and I fully support the fact that we're going to be able to do this. I have a lot of residents who've written and emailed me through the last year on, on when, when are we getting, you know, single-stream recycling, and so I know that a lot of constituents will be happy about that. The other question I did have, on the recycling materials that Waste Management collects, is there, what kind of profit margin is there? Because obviously, that's a commodity when you've got recycling, and is that something that Waste Management is going to profit from because you're able to recycle things that are separated out?
Well, it's, it's a yes and no answer. Right now, the answer is no, but if we have profit in the past, the answer is yes. Will we profit in the future? The answer is yes. But right now, the markets are just in pretty bad shape as far as recyclables go. So if we make money on cardboard, we lose it because we can't get anything for plastics or glass. So it's a, it's a pretty fluctuating market, and we haven't quite seen the, you know, it's probably been five years since we've seen the real crazy $200 a ton for cardboard type of rates. It's somewhere around 80 bucks now, and it costs you 100 to process it, so you're upside down on every ton that you try to send through the mill.
But if in the future, the market improves, say we're looking at, which might, for me, warrant looking at a shorter-term contract, because if we're looking at our costs now are a little bit more for a short contract, because we're guaranteeing you less time than more time, and I understand why our costs are less for the longer contract, but if in the next five years, the, and we, I know you don't know what the commodity market's going to be, but say we're looking at these five years and what happens to the market, if it's something that changes, we want to be able to come back, although can we come back at any time to renegotiate in the middle?
With the consent of both parties, we can. If, if Waste Management chooses not to negotiate at that point, then, you know, you're held until your next option period.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, I just want to put on the record that we're, other than reducing the supplement for residential, we're not changing trash in any way, shape, or form in this contract. This is dealing strictly with garbage.
Correct. The commercial side of
You have to know the difference between trash and garbage.
Just to be clear, the commercial garbage rates are going down by about 2% by removing the traditional subsidy that they've paid to help cover residential. Commercial trash, recyclable materials, construction and demolition waste are not included in the scope of this franchise.
I just want that to be on the record so everybody is aware. This is, this is more contentious of an issue than anyone can imagine. Thank you.
Questions? Anyone else, questions? Ms. Ratty.
I just want to get a little bit more detailed answer on Ms. Bybee's question about the commodity markets. Are the commodity markets, your ability to recoup costs on the commodity markets factored into our franchise rate?
Yes.
They are? Okay, so you make some assumptions about what's going to happen in the commodity markets, and you factor that into this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, you know, we suffer, we suffer the downside of the market, and we reap the benefits on the upside. So, but no matter how it comes out, I mean, we record our, our revenue or expenses through GAAP procedures, and so the, you know, the expense, the cost of goods sold for getting rid of the material is, comes right off. So if we make $100 and we sell it, we sell it for 80, then we're upside down. If we sell it for 120, it costs us, we made 20, but it goes right into the overall rates. It's not tracked separately.
Right. And, but it's projected forward, it's not based on past history?
That's correct.
So you've made some assumption about what commodity markets will do for the next five, seven, and
That, that's correct.
10-year period?
Correct, we have.
And have those assumptions been primarily that they'll still be less than profitable?
It's hard to say. I don't think so. I, I think
But what, I'm asking, what was actually factored into the contract?
It was pretty, it was fairly conservative, yes.
Conservative, okay, all right.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg, if, if we go with option A for 10 years, is that added on to the three years existing to make it 13? So if we get down to seven years, it's still going to be 10 years, is that what we're talking about?
Correct, and that's why we included the expiration date on the table, if you there.
I see that, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make just one comment about that.
Certainly.
When, when I first started talking to you folks about this, you know, I, I told you at the time, and I was really kind of shooting from the hip a little bit, but I've been doing this for a while, so I kind of knew what I was talking about, and I thought I could do it for less than a dollar. And I, I gave a lot of credit in the price for a ten-year deal, and that's because that's what we want. You know, we're, we're spending a lot of money on equipment, on infrastructure, and we want to make sure that we're able to feed our facility. So, but on the other hand, I understood some of the comments from you folks that where you were concerned about, you know, what are we going to do with this stuff? It's, it's changing, and I don't disagree with that. But this is a collection contract, and we're picking this stuff up at your house in a container and putting it in a truck, the same way the mayor's dad did however many years ago. And ten years from now, twenty years from now, we're going to pick this stuff up your truck, in a truck, maybe a different-looking truck, maybe a different-looking container, and we're going to take it somewhere and do something with it. So that's why I put so much value in that collection component, because this is a collection contract, it's not a disposal contract. And we tried to put language in there that if there is something comes out, if we do find out, we can take it to your sewer treatment plant and generate methane and produce electricity from it, that's a great thing, then that's where we'll take it, we'll sit down with you, we'll work something out. But as far as collecting, I just don't see it changing any time in, in my lifetime.
Okay, questions, any other questions? Ms. Ratty.
Yeah, I'll open up the questions. So, so my, my concern about the rate, or the term of the extension has less to do with innovations and technology and more to do with a conversation that we were having a number of years ago, and it's been a number of years now, about getting one franchise agreement for the region, and that if we had Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County all lined up in one space, that we might have more, more collective, frankly, more collective bargaining power and be able to reduce the rate, because there would be efficiency for you, not only would we have more collective bargaining power, but there would be efficiency for you. So my, my interest in aligning terms is, is more about that than innovation, I tend to agree, that, you know, we're always going to have a truck picking up garbage wherever that garbage goes, or recyclables in this case. So, so that's really what I'm contemplating, is by having a shorter term, do we keep some flexibility, so if we could ever get to a place where we have one franchise agreement, that we could then have a better rate for our customers across the region because we are achieving some efficiencies? So do you think that's possible?
Yeah, speaking of not in my lifetime, I mean, I, I agree with you that that, I mean, that's the direction I first started down in 2008, is I wanted to get one franchise here for everybody, but that just wasn't something that was in the cards. All of the agreements have the similar language about the ability to, you know, come midterm and talk about stuff, so it's not like you have to wait till the end of a term if, if it's in everybody's interest to, to talk about that. And I mean, I share your vision, I mean, that would be, I mean, we kind of run it as if it's all one, but, you know, when somebody calls on the phone, and, you know, we had, we talked about this very issue this morning, because folks are going to call in, they're going to see this in the paper tomorrow, and they're going to call in and they're going to say, when am I going to get my cart? And they live out off of the Pyramid Highway, way out off the Pyramid Highway, but their address is Sparks, Nevada. So it's, it's, it's a challenge, and it would be so much easier if everybody had the same service level, the same cost, and it would make everybody's life easier. But I think that with the language we have in the agreement, unless, you know, Chet disagrees, that we could, you know, we could sit down and say, hey, you know, how about consolidating these agreements under one, regardless of what the term is? Let's just say if it happens two years from now, we're still in the five-year deal, does that mean we've got to wait till we're at the end of our agreement in order for us to talk? And from my perspective, the answer would be no, we'd be willing to talk about it at any time.
If I may, the other thing to keep in mind when comparing the Sparks agreement with the Reno agreement, beyond the term is the scope of the agreement. The scope in Reno is considerably much more expansive than what we've contemplated here, in that theirs includes recycling and includes trash.
Yeah, Greg, for your information, you may not use the word consolidating in this chamber. We, we get nervous when we hear that.
Let me, let me write that down, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lawson, I didn't even look, go ahead.
Yeah, um, you got me all messed up with consolidation.
Yeah.
I'll defer to Ms. Bybee.
Ms. Bybee.
I, I did have a question. One of the parts of this contract includes no addition, new additional hauler of commercial, only existing non-franchised haulers are allowed.
That was in the proposal that was discussed here on the 10th of August, and in that discussion and consultation with legal staff, we decided not to include that as part of the amended agreement. So that is not in your amended agreement, that was only in the written proposal from the 10th.
Okay, okay, because I, I believe in a free, open market, and I don't like to limit competition, and I wasn't comfortable with that, so thank you.
That language is not there.
I appreciate, I appreciate that clarification, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think it's important to note that this is a collection fee. Innovations in the future may happen, I'm sure they will, and we'll deal with that down the road. You know, and speaking for myself here, I would, I like the idea of keeping it under a buck, so the ten-year agreement, which we sign all the time with options on it, I'm for that ones, but I won't make that motion unless there's more discussion on it.
Mr. Lawson.
Well, I'm going to give, what I started out to do is give Ron some props on this, because we watched the Reno agreement go, and there was a lot of problems with that agreement with the different-sized containers and people not having enough service, and this is a much cleaner agreement, and I'm inclined to go with the ten-year myself, but I'll let Mr. Smith make that motion.
Ms. Bybee.
The only other thing I do have to say on each of these, and I guess that's what I was nervous about, the ten-year, the ten, the seven, and the five-year, all have an additional two, five-year extensions, so we're really talking about adding ten years to each one of these, the possibility of doing that, which we have now. So we're looking at twenty years, seventeen years, and fifteen years. So, so really kind of that, that twenty was, was more looking out that far for me, I was having an issue with, because we don't have to, but we have tech, you know, theoretically, these could all be added, add ten more years to each of these. And maybe that's a good thing, you know, maybe we're locked in at these prices and going twenty years out, maybe that's a great thing, but not knowing how things will change and commodity markets and just, we're going to see a lot of changes in our community. So that was the only thing for me that I was a little hesitant on, was that ultimate length of the program, but, but I'm not saying that I could not support it, but I was just wanted to voice my concerns on that.
And those are not one-sided options. We would both be coming to the table saying, yes, we want to go forward another five-year term. So the council at that point in time would be able to say yes or no, or we want to look at something else.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Okay, I move to approve the amended and restated garbage and recycling exclusive franchise agreement and associated attachments between the City of Sparks and Sparks Sanitation for a base term to expire on Option A, June 30th, 2028.
Second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good job. Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Not as long as I thought it might. Well, that's not true, it didn't, yeah. Yeah, but we got something good out of it, yeah.
Maybe that longer time is good, because maybe prices will go up so much, it'll be a deal.
There you go, good point.
It's at ninety-eight cents.
Okay, 9.2, consideration possible, direction to the city manager to initiate an amendment to Title 17 of the Sparks Municipal Code to authorize the administrator of Community Services Department to approve final subdivision maps. Mr. Martini.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. John Martini, city engineer here before you. At the October 12th, City Council Workshop, Councilman Lawson asked staff to evaluate our current procedure for processing and approval of final maps. As the council will recall, a developer who wants to have a final map approved within our fair city submits it to the Community Services Department. We go through the various technical checks. When we are sure the map is ready to go, it is then agendized for your approval. That leaves about a seventeen-day dead period, if you will, the maps sit in my office until this body approves it. Staff researched NRS 278. You are the governing body, you have the option to authorize another individual or group to approve final maps. Staff's recommendation is that be, we amend Title 17 to include the administrator of the Community Services Department, so in effect, what will happen is approval of final maps will become ministerial, I believe is the word. When staff is at a place where we think the map is ready to record, it would be given to the administrator of the department for approval, signed there, and then taken down and recorded. So with that, I'm available for questions, if you have any.
Questions for John, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, this, this will cut how much time off of the month, the two weeks, just the two-week period or a month?
I would say two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Well, I think this, this proposal makes sense. I mean, we're, we're in the business of trying to get people
Through the door quickly.
Yeah, through the door quickly and get their projects underway, so to me, this, this makes absolute sense.
Thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
I just had a question. Have there ever been instances when these maps have been approved and they come to council, and there's been an issue, or there is a problem, where, or is it really pretty, pretty much standard, standard that we, that we accept, that there's an acceptance? I'm just looking to make sure there aren't any issues.
In my sixteen years here, the approval of final maps have always been on your consent agenda, and I do not ever recall one being pulled and denied. I remember a few being pulled with some questions as to location, number of units, or some other matter, but I don't recall one being denied.
Okay, as long as that's the case, I, I agree with Councilman Smith. I think that the streamlining everything we do in the business of the city, that we can make it easier, quicker, and more user-friendly for businesses and residents, I think is a good thing. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
I want to thank staff for researching this for me, too, because it just made perfect sense to me. We never turn one down, why does it need to come before us? So there's no other question, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
One question, there is not, there is an inability here for this, for the council to bring this to the council, or if there's a reason to bring it back to the council, we can still do that, right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, your question?
We can still have this heard before the full council, can we not? If there's, if there's a council person that wants this heard in front of the council?
If we amend our current municipal code, there will be no chance that I can think of for the council to deny a final map.
Okay.
Your place and time would be at the tentative map stage?
Okay, oh, that's right.
Yeah, you will still see tentative maps.
Okay, good.
The final procedures will become ministerial at that point.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, this formality, basically, all the hashing has been done by the time it gets the final map.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to move to direct staff to amend Title 17 of the Sparks Municipal Code to authorize the administrator of the Community Services Department to approve final maps.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve Agenda Item 9.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. 9.3, consideration possible, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Sparks and Operating Engineers Local Number Three to change one job title in the Operating Engineers Local Union Number Three Non-Supervisory Contract, Appendix A.
Good afternoon. I'm default Human Resources Manager. Today, we're presenting a memorandum of understanding between the City of Sparks and Operating Engineers to change the job title of Wastewater System Analyst to Control Systems Programmer. This is a title change only, no money, we just want people who do the job go, hey, I do that, I want to apply for it. So we're just trying to call it what it does and get people interested in it. With that, do you have any questions?
Questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
I move that the City Council approve the memorandum of understanding with Operation, Operating Engineers Local Number Two, sorry, Three.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
I know.
Please vote, who's not voted? There you go. Passes unanimously, thank you. Thanks, Mindy. Okay, 9.4, consideration, discussion, and possible approval to make changes to the City of Sparks Group Health Plan document as recommended by the City of Sparks Health Committee. Welcome.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Jen McCall, Senior HR Analyst, City of Sparks, and Chairperson of the City's Group Health Committee. The Group Health Committee, on an annual basis, is asked to review the Group Health Plan document and consider changes, modifications, that are legally requested, fiscally responsible, and/or necessary under the Affordable Care Act. I'm here today to ask the council to consider those recent modifications as requested by the Group Healthcare Committee and voted on, and identified in the staff report for an effective date of January 1st, 2016. I am prepared to answer any questions you may have, and or go through each item with you one by one.
Questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jen, the healthcare committee recommends changes to our policies, is that correct?
Correct.
Have they ever recommended or given back anything they have, or modified it down?
Yes, in 2006, they made some modifications that took it down, but since that period of time, we have had no changes to the Group Health Plan document, other than required changes under the Affordable Care Act.
So, did they ever return with those concessions? Did we ever reinstate those concessions in 2006?
No, no.
Okay.
So we made, it was slight modifications in 2006 that would create a little bit of a savings to the plan at that time, but since then, no, they have not made any additional changes. They were asked this last fiscal year to consider new changes to the plan that would save us money. This, it was, it was a productive year, and this was the first time we actually looked through a number of changes, and they had come up with nearly $75,000 in changes moving forward. And then the issue of the transgender surgery came to the table, which reduced our overall savings, but we're, would still see a savings.
So besides the savings that we're going to have with moving to Renown, how do these create savings?
By making some modifications to our plan design. Overall, our third-party administrators and our brokers have identified areas where we can find savings in the plan. So there were a number of items that were presented to them, and depending on how those members voted, these were the, the changes that they could live with right now to the plan design. For example, emergency room visits. Initially, it looks like there would not be a savings, but if we can re-educate employees to utilize an urgent care facility versus an emergency room, we are looking at what could amount to six figures in savings just in that area alone.
See, in the, in the private sect, if you go to the emergency room and it's not an emergency, they pay for it out of their own pocket, and that's the kind of thing I would look for
Correct.
in the future, I just think that
And we actually considered a deductible to emergency room visits. It was not voted to include, however, the Group Health Care Committee said that if we don't see significant changes in the ER visits this next year, they would like to implement some copays. So when you go to the emergency room and it's a non-emergency, you would be $200 out of pocket upfront just for that emergency.[1694.01] So, their goal was to try and do some education versus some punitive changes, since it's been so long since we've actually made changes. We have a lot of new employees that need to better understand their benefits. And so, their plan is, moving forward, to start putting changes that are in place that are more punitive to the members, if they don't start utilizing the plan a little bit better and smarter.
Last question. Did you get that in writing?
No.
Okay.
No, but I do feel confident in the changes that we made. This is the first time in a long time that we are moving, I think, in a good direction.
Thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm encouraged that we are seeing $47,000 worth of savings. However, because the cost of healthcare, for the city, being self-insured, for our retirees, for every American sitting here in this room, is just such an extraordinary burden of the cost of healthcare that we all bear, that whatever we can do to really look even harder at additional, I'm encouraged there's some savings. But I look at, from the private sector, where I come from with my other job, and I look at deductibles, and I look at your, you know, using preferred providers, all the things that help you manage care and manage use, so getting people using it more wisely. When you get everything with very little deductible or very little cost to you, I think sometimes the system can be abused. And even if it's not, I mean, truly, when you have medical need, which I have and my family has, I mean, we all have, you're glad that you have it. But what can we do to look harder at really, you know, the healthcare committee really taking a more serious look at how can we continue to increase our savings? And maybe it's giving back a little more, but then, you know, for the city itself, for our financial stability, and for the cost for the retirees, which is a huge issue. I'd like to see more savings than we're seeing right here. So, I like it where we are, but I would really like to see a more concerted effort and focus of the healthcare committee on really looking strongly and looking at other, you know, other places, other plans, of what people are doing that are maybe innovative things that we haven't thought about to save those costs, because it is such an incredibly burdensome on the city budget and on individuals, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ratty.
Same comments, I'm thrilled to see some savings, and we have to talk to you, particularly with retirees who are bearing the bulk of increases on their own dime. And so, would love to see some more, would love to see some innovation. I like what you're saying. I hope that's captured in the minutes, because it's now a public meeting, and there are minutes, right? So, we can at least go back to that. But happy to see the changes, and so with that, I'm going to go ahead and make...
Wait a minute.
Public hearing. I'm not going to do anything. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it to the public. I have speaker cards from Lee Leighton. Welcome, Lee.
My name is Lee Leighton. I'm here today as one of the members of the City's Health Committee, representing retirees. I am a retired City of Sparks employee, retiring 12 years ago. As a member of the Health Committee, we have no vote on the changes to the plan. Our main purpose has been to communicate to the committee retiree issues and pass on information to retirees. I have two reasons for being here today. One is to support the insurance proposals coming before the council, particularly those items that reduce cost. The other is to bring to your attention the most serious issue to retirees regarding health insurance, that being affordability. And I can see the council kind of has already said that, just listening out there. The City of Sparks retirees are being priced out of the plan. The last two years, there have been two 25% increases, and we are being told to anticipate another 25% increase in 2016. To the retiree who is paying 100% of the premium cost, which is about 50% of the present retired employees on the program, this is having a serious financial impact. The Health Committee's primary role is dealing with health insurance plans, such as benefits and reducing costs. The funding of the health insurance program is solely the responsibility of the City of Sparks, and premium rates are set by the city, and it's something the Health Committee has little control over. Myself and Dave Seville, who is sitting out here, recently met with the city manager, Steve Driscoll, to discuss our concerns and look at possible resolutions. I feel it was a good start to opening a dialogue on critical issues that need further attention from the city council, present city employee, and retirees. I know the council must be thinking, dollars, this is more money. But there are some inequities occurring within the system that need attention. The retirees being hurt most are the ones who retired from the lowest-paying positions within the city, and insurance premiums of $800 to $2,000 is a major portion of their retirement. Both Dave and I are willing to meet with the council member who have questions, and are confident something can be done. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Dan Hamlin?
Mayor, council members, my name's Dan Hamlin. I retired just not quite a year yet in the city. I'm here today to voice my concerns in regards to the increase in cost to our healthcare for the retirees. Like we was saying, the last few years, we've seen a 50% increase, and next year, another 25% increase. This is a 75% increase to the retirees. That's just unbelievable. This increase does not affect all retirees, it only affects a small group, due to the fact that some retirees are receiving subsidies from the city, anywhere from 40% to 60%, while others are burdened with the full cost of the increases. Some of us would not have retired if we would have known about the increases. As retirees, we made our decisions to retire based on the cost of healthcare, not planning on a 75% increase. Many retirees will have to go back to work, some will have to change their living styles, others will have to cancel their traveling plans. In closing, I would like to ask the city manager, Steve Driscoll, to help us come up with some alternatives to offset the high increases for this small group of retirees. I would also like to ask council for their support. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to council for action. Questions?
She's ready for a motion.
Go ahead, Drea.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to approve the recommended changes to the City of Sparks Group Health Plan for the plan year beginning January 1st, 2016.
Do I have a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Oops, wait a minute. Penishes, passes three to one, excuse me. Mr. Smith, no, I didn't look. Okay. Good, okay. Moving on to 10.1, public hearing, consideration and possible approval of a request from SWD Quarry FVS LLC to the City of Sparks for abandonment of four parcels of right-of-way abutting the proposed Fountain House project. Mr. Martini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, John Martini, city engineer, before you're here today, with a, for your consideration and possible approval of an abandonment of four pieces of right-of-way that abut the Fountain House project. Mr. Brown, can I have the computer? Thank you. I highlight in your staff report the four areas. I know sometimes when I send the legal descriptions in with the staff report, it's a little hard to tell what they are. So, abandonment area number one, for the council's orientation, this is Victorian Avenue at the bottom of the screen, Victorian Plaza Circle to the west and to the north, and 13th Street next to the theaters right now, running north and south. Abandonment area number one is the old B.C. Alley that runs between the parcels, and so the council can see it, the thick blue line is the boundary of the Fountain House final map. So, abandonment area number one is the B.C. Alley and a piece of 13th Street. Abandonment areas two and three are the old corners on Avenue of the Oaks and Victorian Plaza Circle. An abandonment area number four is a piece of the parking lane on 13th Street. As the developer was going through the design of the Fountain House project, these areas became pretty clear that it would be nice to take them out of public ownership, put them into the Fountain House project. Staff has reviewed the supplemental, the legal descriptions, has made sure proper public noticing has been done, and we are, staff is of the opinion that the public will not be materially harmed by these abandonments and support the abandonment to go along with our Fountain House project. That's all I have for my presentation, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions. Ms. Bybee.
Was there any cost to do this, or was there, we're just abandoning that, right? There wasn't, we didn't ask for reimbursement, or they didn't have to pay us for the additional land, it's just...
That is correct.
Right-of-way abandonment.
Your action today simply takes it from public right-of-way and puts it into private ownership, and if you will, it comes back on the tax rolls.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action or questions, or action. Ms. Bybee.
Are we ready for a motion?
Certainly.
Okay. I move to approve the abandonment of four parcels of right-of-way abutting the proposed Fountain House project, as submitted by staff.
Do I have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bybee, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve Agenda Item 10.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Planning and zoning public hearings, 11.1, PCN 15017. Consideration of and possible action on a master plan amendment, request to change the land use designation from medium-density residential MDR to transit-oriented development mixed residential TOD MR. For a site approximately 1.4 acres in size located in 1250 Sullivan Lane, Sparks. Mr. Ornellis.
Mayor Martini, members of the city council, Armando Ornellis, city planner. This master plan amendment proposes to change the land use designation on a 1.4-acre parcel from MDR, which is medium-density residential, to TOD slash or dash mixed residential. So, the parcel in question is right here. Here is Sullivan Lane, here's Audi Boulevard. The affordable housing project that was built, I think, last year is this area in the peak here along Merchant Street, so it's essentially directly across Merchant Street from that parcel. To the west here is the Kmart Shopping Center, there's multifamily here, and then to the immediate south and east is single-family residential. Essentially, the applicant's goal is to redevelop portions of this 1.4-acre site by raising some or all of the four single-family structures on the site and constructing additional apartment buildings. Along the north side of the site here, there are apartment buildings already, and there's actually a total of 22 units on the site. So, really, what they're looking to do is take down the houses and with that, be able to construct additional apartment buildings and increase the density of the site. The ultimate redevelopment of the site will have to conform to the TOD design standards. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting, which is required by Nevada revised statutes on a master plan amendment, on April 29th. Approximately 20 people attended. They did have some concerns, including, you know, essentially just adding additional apartments in this area, as well as some more specific design-type things, including, you know, the height of structures, et cetera. I believe that a lot of those concerns can be addressed ultimately when we go through the second review process on any future development of the site. The Sparks Planning Commission, on May 7th of this year, approved the master plan amendment. It then went on to regional planning, and the Regional Planning Commission found it in conformance with the regional plan on September 23rd of this year. There are four findings that have to be addressed, and those are covered in the staff report. And with that, I will conclude by noting that the Planning Commission and staff is recommending that the city council certify the master plan amendment. The applicant, Jeff Fisher, is here, and he may want to address you, or you may have questions for him, as well as for me. Thank you.
Questions for Armando. Ms. Bybee.
How many units are going to be added?
Well, we don't have a specific project proposal. This is the master plan amendment, so they've not come in with a project yet. This is essentially the, you know, on the front end, you would have to amend the master plan, and then there is a corresponding item on the agenda which follows this one, which is to rezon the property to MUD mixed-use development. So, ultimately, I think the constraints, there's no maximum, as you may know, in the TOD in general. The constraints have to do with meeting all of the standards, the design standards. There's setbacks, there's the need to step, you know, projects back as you, in the area adjacent to single-family. You know, there's landscaping standards, et cetera. So, that's what effectively limits the number of units that can be added.
Okay. And obviously, hopefully, during that process, it'll be taken into consideration the neighborhood concerns that you've heard as far as what that project, the final project, and the number will look like.
Yeah, it's an administrative review process, so there isn't the public hearing process, but certainly, we got a pretty good idea of what, you know, the concerns were when they had the neighborhood meeting. So, given that and the need to apply the design standards, we would be, you know, trying to mitigate as many impacts as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Applicant, want to say anything? You don't have to, if you don't want, it's all right. You okay with the presentation? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action or questions. Ms. Ratty.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I move to certify the master plan amendment for PCN 15017, based on findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings, as set forth in the staff report.
Second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Lawson, to approve Agenda Item 11.1, PCN 15017. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 11.2, second reading, public hearing, consideration and possible action on Bill Number 2696, ordinance by the City of Sparks to rezon a site approximately 1.4 acres in size, from SF6 Single Family Residential to MUD Mixed Use District, located at 1250 Sullivan Lane, Sparks. Go ahead, Armando.
So, Armando Ornellis, city planner. This item is the companion item I mentioned during the earlier agenda item, and this is basically to rezon this parcel, again, it's located here, from SF6 Single Family Residential to MUD Mixed Use District. And MUD is, as you may recall from our recent update of the zoning code, what was formerly referred to as TOD, so it's Mixed Use District, is how we re-characterize this in the zoning code update. One thing I'll call your attention to in the, on the map that's on the screen, the parcel here is in this light blue or light gray, depending on how you see it. And as you can see, all of the area adjacent to the north and across to the west is all TOD, so we're, you know, we're basically changing the zoning to conform with the, all the adjacent areas to the north and the west. I previously noted that there are currently four single-family structures and two apartment buildings on this property. All of those structures were constructed between the 1940s and 1969, and that was before the city had planning jurisdiction, so that was all done, you know, when this was, when Washoe County handled the zoning. And in fact, the relevance of that is that those apartment buildings are not conforming, given the relative, the current zoning, so the rezoning would actually bring that parcel into greater conformance with the zoning and master plan. As with the previous item, the Sparks Planning Commission recommended approval of the zoning change on May the 7th, and then, last city council meeting on October 12th, this council conducted the first reading of the bill. There are three findings that are addressed in the staff report, which have to be made. And again, as I noted, this rezoning brings this property into greater conformance, as opposed to where we are now. So, Planning Commission, staff is recommending the council approve the requested zoning change, and that concludes my presentation.
Questions? Okay, no questions. Public hearing, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for questions or action. Questions? Ms. Ratty? Motion?
It brings it into greater conformance with our code. I don't know how you could argue with that, so I move to adopt Bill Number 2696, an ordinance for a zone change request for PCN 15017, based on findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings, as set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Lawson, to approve 11.2, which is Bill Number 2696. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to 11.3, public hearing, consideration of and possible approval for a request from Greenleaf Wellness, Inc., to move a medical marijuana cultivation and production facility from an approved location at 1825 Freeport Boulevard to a location at 380 South Rock Boulevard. Mr. Ornellis.
Mayor Martini, members of the city council, I am Armando Ornellis, your city planner. This is a request from Greenleaf Wellness to asking the Sparks City Council to conduct a public hearing and approve a change of location to operate a medical marijuana cultivation and production facility. There's also a companion item to this, which is similar for the purposes of a change of location for a medical marijuana dispensary. Greenleaf is requesting a change from a proposed location at 1825 Freeport Boulevard, which is essentially, which is directly south of Baldini's, to the west, to this location. is essentially, which is directly south of Baldini's, to the west, to this location. Here's Interstate 80, and here is Rock Boulevard. The yellow parcel is the location. It is a building, an industrial building, that houses a building, among others, that you may have seen the sign, Treasures, Trinkets and Trash. That's the proposed location. The previous location, the Freeport Boulevard location, was approved through the city's administrative review process in September of 2014. Greenleaf Wellness was not able to come to terms, in terms of acquiring that property, so they submitted a new administrative review application for this location on, at 380 South Rock Boulevard in September of this year. Staff have completed the review process and have concluded that the proposed location complies with the city's zoning standards for a medical marijuana cultivation and production facility. And so the city staff have issued an approval letter, which is part of your packet, which is contingent on city council approval of the change of location after a public hearing. Now, I will note that neither the city's land use entitlement process nor the business licensing process, which would also be required to ultimately establish the business, includes a public hearing requirement. What has changed is that in this last legislative session of 2015, there was a bill, SB 276, that amended NRS 453A .350. And basically, that change in Nevada law allows a medical marijuana establishment that has been granted a provisional certificate, and this cultivation and production facility has a provisional certificate, to change to a new location within the same jurisdiction. So, you know, this one, both locations in this case are within Sparks. If the change has been approved by the local government after a public hearing for which at least seven days' notice has been provided. And so in this case, we published notice of this public hearing on October 14th, 2015, and so staff is recommending, because we've gone through the administrative review process, and that's the basis for our recommendation, that the council conduct a public hearing and approve the change of location.
Questions for Armando or the applicant? Okay. This is a public hearing, I'll open it to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for questions or action. Questions? Motion? Mr. Smith.
Okay, I move to approve the request from Greenleaf Wellness incorporated to move a medical marijuana cultivation and production facility from 1825 Freeport Boulevard to a location at 380 South Rock Boulevard.
Do we have a second? Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, based on the advice of my attorney, going to abstain from this item and the next item.
Okay, do we have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve 11.3 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, let the record show, it passes three to one with one abstention being Mr. Lawson. Okay, 11.4, Armando.
Mayor Martini, members of the city council, Armando Ornellis, city planner. As noted during the previous item, the administrative review process that we went through in 2014 with Greenleaf was for a location that included not only cultivation and production activities for medical marijuana, but a dispensary as well. In this case, the, there was some constraints in terms of our zoning criteria with regard to being able to establish the dispensary use on the, at the Rock Boulevard, South Rock Boulevard location. And so in this case, they are proposing, for purposes of the dispensary, this location here, here's South McCarran. It is in the same building as Woody's Grill, so you probably are familiar with that location. There's other commercial uses here in the center. And so, again, previously approved but never established on Freeport, this location is the proposed new location. And again, as per the change to NRS 453A .350, the change of location can be approved per the state after a public hearing and approval by the city council. So with that, I will conclude my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Ornellis? Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mayor. Armando, is there a reason why the dispensary will be in a separate location? I know that, obviously, the applicants have a right to do that, but is there any future plans for the dispensary to be included with the, in the first property on Freeport at some point in time, or will it always be the two separate, two separate locations? Do you?
Well, there are constraints in our code that would, that would not permit the dispensary to be located in this location currently, or at the, at the South Rock Boulevard location currently. You know, you would have to address your question as to whether they would prefer to actually all of them located in the same location to the applicant, I would suggest. But in order for a dispensary to go at the other location where the production and cultivation use would be going, we'd have to amend our zoning code.
Okay, so because it's not in compliance with our zoning codes, are the reason for the two separate facilities that they're applying for today?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ratty.
I can't remember as part of the process, so I know that, whether it be production or dispensary, that the state has, I believe, in their statute, details about the security of the building and the features of the building that make it appropriate for a medical marijuana, either production facility or dispensary. And I'm unclear, now that the new legislature, the new law came in the last legislative session, and now we're allowed to approve locations, who's reviewing the location to make sure that it meets those security and facility enhancement requirements?
As part of our administrative review process, the, you know, it's not just a planning review, it's an interdepartmental review, which includes the police department. So it's really, on your behalf, it's the police department that is conducting that review with regard to security of the location.
Okay, so including what the features of the building that are required under state law?
Well, you know, the state would have their own regulations with regard to the security of the building. Through our business licensing process, as well as through the input that they provide on the administrative review process, our police department reviews, has its own criteria for security.
So I guess I think we're getting to the question that I'm really asking, is the state going to review this location as well?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing items, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for questions or action. Questions? Action? Ms. Ratty.
I move to approve the request for Greenleaf Wellness, Inc. to move a medical marijuana dispensary from 1825 Freeport Boulevard to a location at 960 South McCarran Boulevard.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 11.4 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. For the record, passes three to zip with one abstention, Mr. Lawson. Thank you. All right, folks, you're ready to go. Any new location? Thanks. Close of our session, Steve? No?
No, sir.
Okay. Comments from the public? Seeing comments? None? Comments from the council or city manager? Ms. Ratty.
I'd just like to ask the city manager to keep us apprised of his meetings with the retiree group and their request for support to come to creative solutions about the small number of retirees that have no subsidy.
Anyone else? Okay, oops. Okay. That's right, you let him go, then you can go.
Thinking, Mr. Mayor, I have an announcement for the council. The following committee appointments are available. Airport and Ares Authority Committee, two members for two-year terms. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering &amp; Get Involved, then click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted and closed of business on November 1st, 2015. Thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
I had a request of the city manager to look into possibility for future subject in our concurrent meetings with Washoe County and the Reno City Council, to look at the possibility of community-wide support from all three entities for our Fourth of July celebration, our Star Spangled Sparks. I would like to reach out and see if we can make this a community-wide event that sparks and our businesses are not solely supporting that, because it is the only fireworks and Fourth of July celebration in the region. I'd like to see if we could make this more of a regional effort that we work with the county and the city of Reno, and that might be a topic we could bring forth at another concurrent meeting that had other topics, not a topic of its own, but one where we are meeting with the concurrent bodies. Thank you.
Okay, one thing I have, Mr. Manager, it's come to my attention, Title 15 of the Sparks municipal code currently requires certificates of qualification for plumbers and electricians working on any project under a Sparks building permit. I understand the language has existed in the code since the 1990s but is not being used. Our electrical and plumbing codes are based upon the quality of the work and that what is, and that is what staff focuses on. So I would like you to take a look at or bring back to the council an item for council action that would consider removing such language from the Sparks municipal code, seeing it's not being used.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Of October 26, 2015, with a roll call, please. Chairperson Ratty? Here. Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt?
Absent.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, moving on to item number four, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, but from Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Martini. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, approval of the minutes of September 28th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion from Council, or Agency Member Bybee, seconded by Agency Member Lawson. Any discussion? Seeing none on, I'm going to try to slow down a little bit.
Try to break the record.
So no discussion. Go ahead to call for the vote. Does, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 6.1, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of September 10, 2015 through October 7, 2015.
Moved or approved, Madam Chair?
Second.
Moved by Agency Member Martini, seconded by Agency Member Bybee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Comments from the public? Once again, is there anybody in the public who'd like to comment? Seeing none, comments from the agency or chief administrative officer? Got none, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We're adjourned.